Good morning. It's still morning, a little bit. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham?
Present.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Councilman Avery?
Here.
Councilman Ba?
Here.
Councilman Wilson?
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra?
Here.
And Councilman Robinson?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Smith to lead the invocation. Please stand or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I propose our heart with prayer. Welcome to you this morning, the humblest way we know how. Our heads and humble hearts are looking unto you. You are the ultimate finisher of our faith. Word tells us that if we acknowledge in all our ways that you would direct our paths. We lift up our mayor, we lift up our council, we lift up the staff, every person in City Hall, God. We lift up those across America affected by the storm, God. We just ask that you continue to lead and guide us. Thank you for Ash Wednesday and next season, and guidance down through Palm Sunday, and then we're in Holy Week. So let us be mindful that Jesus, the Son of Man, came to seek and to save that which was lost. So even throughout the remainder of this week, as we approach Good Friday and Resurrection Weekend, help us to remember to try our best to bring Matthew 25 alive. You said, "I was hungry, and you fed me. Thirsty, and you gave me a drink. In prison, and you visited me. Naked, and you clothed me." So we looked up this council meeting today, and we just say at the end of the day, God, continue to be glorified in all that we say, in all that we do, and we ask it all in the midst of the same Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, we pray. In all the degree, say, "Amen."
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Works Committee work session and city council meetings held on March 21st.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item six, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of account for the weeks of March 17th through March 23rd and March 24th through March 30th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts for both weeks.
Item seven is reserved for proclamations and commendations. There being none, we'll move to item Agenda Eight, Agenda Item Eight, unfinished business. We have three ordinances that were presented on March 21st for the first reading. Item 8A is an ordinance amending fiscal year 2023 budget, transferring $1,713,000 from the general fund unassigned fund balance to pay for acquisition of property from the Gadsden Airport Authority as authorized by Resolution Number R-62-23. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 8B is an ordinance amending the Community Development Block Grant Program 2022 through 2024, consolidated plan to add economic development and neighborhood revitalization activities, including a micro enterprise program and accessible playground. It also amends the 2022 CDBG-CV budget to reallocate unexpended COVID funds to the Etowah County Community Food Bank for the purchase of a box truck. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 8C is an ordinance adopting the Community Development Block Grant Program Fiscal Year 2023 Annual Action Plan and Budget. This adopts the Fiscal Year 2023 Action Plan and CDBG budget totaling $999,724 for the period from June 1st, 2023, through May 31st, 2024. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstain, we just want an abstention.
We have one abstention. Motion carries to adopt.
Item 8D is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1300 East Broad Street in District Two. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on February 21st. There is a recommendation from the building official to adopt the resolution. What is the pleasure of the council?
I have a question on this for Mr. Harbison. I want to make sure this is just a scrap or trash abatement on this, the 1300 East Broad. And not the structure, the physical structure.
Are you asking that the abatement is on the trash and scrap debris?
Yes, and not the structure itself.
It's not the house, never has been.
Okay. Make a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harbison.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 8E is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 235 North Sixth Street in District Three. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on February 21st. There is a recommendation from the building official to adopt the resolution. What is the pleasure of the council?
I've spoken with Mr. Harbison about this. We're working on one other piece, and that's getting the tarp over it. So hopefully, within the next few weeks, we'll have a tarp over it to continue with the process of saving this historical location. And the historic location is the Owens Manor, which is a former historical hotel that is registered in the Green Book, but we're also registering with the state. And through that, there should be some funds that'll help revitalize and save this. So I am going to ask for a table. I'm going to do seven days on this to follow up next week. If I don't have any concrete next week, then we'll look at another avenue. So I ask for a table of seven days.
Is the motion to table for seven days, is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for seven days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for seven days.
Agenda Item Nine, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. RCR Railhouse LLC, doing business as the rail, located at 538 Broad Street in District Five, has applied for a restaurant retail liquor license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
Just real quick, added point, this is just a transfer of an existing alcohol license. We discussed this a couple of weeks ago, but the state of Alabama will actually, ABC Board will actually allow you to transfer an alcohol license from one owner to the other. The City of Gadsden's policy is to not allow a simple transfer. If there's a change in ownership, they have to go back through the application process. So all this is, is a transfer of a license of an existing operating business.
All right. Any other discussion? All right.
I make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstain.
We have one abstention. Motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 on the agenda is the first reading. It's an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property to Etowah County Communications 911 District. This conveys the city's one-third interest in the building located on property owned by the Etowah County Communications 911 District at 4610 Airport Road. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Item 11 is new business, and we have quite a few that have been generated from our pre-council meeting.
Yes, sir. Council President, as you said, given the fact that we were in Washington, D.C. during our, what would have been our previous meeting, we have a considerable amount of action to take, and I actually have several resolutions that I will be asking for immediate consideration of. And I'll start with a resolution requested by the legal department. This is Resolution 2023-298, authorizing an abatement for Project Scout, which is an economic development abatement for a potential industrial development project. This is essentially offering an abatement of noneducational property taxes for this potential industrial project for a term of 20 years. So I would ask that we suspend the rules for immediate consideration of this resolution, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consideration has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, Mr. President, the next one I have is from the Engineering Department. This is Resolution 2023-285. This is a resolution awarding bid number 3502, the 2023 City of Gadsden Cemetery Lawn Maintenance to L. Powell Services LLC in the amount of $189,899.84. So again, I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this today under new business.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, my next resolution is requested from the legal department. This is Resolution Number 2023-176, and this is actually some really good news. I'm excited about this. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign settlement participation forms in the opioid, national opioid lawsuit that was filed several years ago, actually. So this is a culmination of a lot of hard work by a lot of people, and will result in the city receiving some funds from this settlement to hopefully go to help address the opioid addiction issue that's been plaguing this city and many others around the country for quite some time. So again, I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business, please.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Last one for me, Mr. President. This is requested by the Engineering Department. This is documented Resolution 2023-294. This is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Nixon Power Services and A&amp;S Electrical Contractors to replace a generator at one of our communication tower sites that the existing backup generator that was on-site failed. The Engineering Department has temporarily acquired a generator that they are leasing to meet the requirements and keep the communications tower compliant, but this would be $73,987 to purchase a permanent replacement generator for that site. So again, I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
That's all I have.
Way to go, Councilman Wilson. All right, Councilman Minatra, do you have, are you ready, or you want to?
Yes. Resolution Number 290, authorizing. Oh, sorry. Authorizing, Resolution 290, authorizing approval of the proposal from Folkert, Inc. in the amount of $241,579. And this is to accept their proposal to provide a feasibility study for the realignment of US 411. I request that we consider this resolution today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
That's all of them.
That's all for you, okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Minatra. Councilman Robinson?
Yes, Mr. President, I have three here. The first is coming from the Engineering Department, Number 2023-286. It's a resolution authorizing Amendment One to the agreement with Barrett Jones and Wilson LLC. This is for the Knocklough Falls Gorge Trail pedestrian access improvements. Due to federal funding with the DECA, we had to, with the city, to notify the following contractor clauses required must be added to the agreement of engineer service in order to comply with the federal requirements. I ask for, I'd like to suspend the rules and ask for immediate consent on this.
Second.
Move to adopt.
Yeah, we'll vote. That's okay. Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I have another one, Mr. President, from the Engineering Department. I'm sorry, yeah, Engineering Department, right. 2023-287 is a resolution authorizing Amendment Number One to agree with S. and M. E. Incorporated. It's basically the same thing as we did earlier.
Just adding this language.
Basically, for the Knocklough Falls Gorge Trail. So I ask to suspend the rules and ask for immediate consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, Mr. President, the last one, I'm excited about all of these, but the last one is from the Engineering Department also, 2023-292. It's a resolution authorizing agreement with Goodwin Mills, Kewood LLC, budgeted at $432,000. This is the project for the new Knocklough Corridor, putting in sidewalks, pedestrian crossways, streets, scrape improvements, and a lot of other good things. I'd like to make a motion, I'm sorry, I'd like to, immediate consideration to approve this today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Robinson. I believe we have a few more. Councilman Avery?
All right. Start with the vicious one first, request from Parks and Recreation Department. This was concerning the amendment amending rental rates in various facilities in parks and Recreation Department. All is well with it. The Carver Alumni Five and every other year, language has been added along with the gentleman's agreement. And so I will ask for this item to be considered a new business today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution as an item of new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Request from the Fire Department, Legal Department, 2023-282, document resolution authorizing conveyance of surplus equipment to Susan Moore Fire Department, Altoona, Alabama, rescue truck. So selling one of the old trucks costs, it's been, the sale price is $12,000. So an opportunity to help a neighboring county, and also helping the City of Gadsden, bringing in some funds. And so I will ask for this item to be considered for new business today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution under new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilman Smith, do you have one for new business? No? All right, Councilwoman Latham?
Yes, Mr. President, I have two. The first is from the Engineering Department, Legal Department, 2023-291, resolution awarding bid number 3498 for the Convention Hall Demolition Project, budgeted at $239,000. I would like it to be considered for immediate, considered today.
Second. We're tearing it down.
Definitely. We hate to see it go, but we embrace tomorrow.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution under new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
One abstention.
Abstention?
Yes.
The motion carries to adopt with one abstention.
All right, I have another, which is requested from the Finance Department. It is Legal 2023-295, resolution amending fiscal year 2023 budget. I would ask that it be considered immediately today.
And just to clarify, all this is, is a formal document that amends the city budget for all the things that we just already approved. It's really just a technicality, a kind of an exclamation point on all these exciting projects that we just voted on.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Now, so moved to be adopted.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I believe that finalizes all the new business. Move to Agenda Item 12, Department Reports, Committees and Boards. I'd like to recognize Craig Scott with the, our library director.
Mr. President, thank you very much, council members. It's my privilege today to, with all the exciting projects going on, to brag a little bit about the library, and in fact, not just the library, the library staff. We finished up our 2022 statistics and turned those into the state library, and I'm sharing those with you. I think Iva has passed out the little infographic that I put together. That's going around right now. We're going to be posting this on our Facebook pages later today and our website for everyone to see, but this is a good indication of the value that the library brings to our community. We are not a revenue generating machine, okay, with all of our lost books and book fines. But at the same time, the library is an important part of the community, and I think this summary will talk volumes about that. Something you can share with your constituents, at least you'll know the value that your constituents put into the library. And with that said, we are on top of our annual golf outing, our library foundation. It'll be on Friday, April 21st, and I'm asking for all of your support. I think you have some of the paperwork, but we're looking for your support. Last year, we raised a little over $10,000. This year, we're shooting for $15,000, and all of that goes to our big, our big summer reading program. We want to keep kids reading, you know, while they're out of school, and that's what the aim and focus of this is on. So appreciate your support with that.
Craig, I think, just an idea, especially if you want the city council to participate in the golf tournament, you should charge a dollar per stroke, and I bet you'd make a hundred million dollars.
I bet we would. That's a good suggestion, thanks.
Craig, thank you for you and your staff and all you do, and I think it's important to point out, this is, you know, a county-wide library. I mean, do you have an idea of who visits? You know, there's, you have 22,500 registered library patrons, but there was 106,730 yearly visitors to the library. Do you have a breakdown of where they come from?
We certainly do, and by zip code as well. Our library cardholders are broken, just in general, about 60% are the City of Gadsden, 40% come from other communities in the county.
Great, wonderful.
And we have a handful outside of the county as well. Jason, you mentioned earlier about counting. We have door counters at each of our three branches.
I love it.
So, yeah, we know those numbers are right on.
Well, this is an excellent piece, Michael. I'm assuming that you have this, and so this can be shared.
And by the way, Michael helped me with that, too. So I want to recognize him, yeah.
I helped make it.
You helped make it? Why am I not surprised? Well, thank you very much. This looks very, but this is good information. I think our community and our taxpayers should know about the Gadsden Library. Y'all do so much more than just quote-unquote "have books."
That's right.
I mean, what an outreach, and like 13,698 uses of public library computers, 15,234 Wi-Fi logins, oh my gosh, I mean, it just goes on and on, 37,000 uses of information databases. It just, I mean, it's a huge list, so thank you and your staff. It's a vital component for our education system here in all three school systems in our county, so your work is very much appreciated.
And I should say, this, all of our statistics backs us up here. Gadsden Public Library sticks out when it comes to other state libraries, public libraries in the state of Alabama.
Wonderful.
Well, and I want to personally commend you and the staff there, because the one thing on here that's not at all part of your job requirements or roles or responsibilities, 2,830 volunteer hours of service from your staff, that's incredible.
Yep, we get a lot of volunteers, and they help us tremendously.
Yeah. Well, then, you know, we can't talk about the library, it almost did, without mentioning the beautiful Rainbow Cafe, and what a success that has been, and for all the folks at our Board of Education and our students there, and Chip Rowan and yourself, and countless others.
Quick little advertisement, spring break is done. They're open today.
Yeah, back open, all right.
If you haven't been to that beautiful Rainbow Cafe, it's located inside the Gadsden Public Library on College Street, and it is one of the best restaurants in the whole county, so operated totally by students, and it's just a fantastic story. So I encourage anyone that hasn't been to please go.
I am a full-on carnivore, Craig, but I will come have that carrot cake all day long.
That's all right. That's good stuff.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you. Any other, of course, I see Jen Wethington coming, thanks, Jen. I know this is beginning your season.
Yes, spring has sprung, and we are open and excited for it. We did have spring break last week, like Craig said, and Knocklough Falls was packed out, the campground, Marana Park, all of our parks, and we had a lot of visitors in our community centers. So just wanted to come and talk about some other activities that we have going on, will have going on for this month, and possibly beyond that. But just to start off, Jason, I did do a quick research, and John was correct, it do a quick research and John was correct. It is over 300,000 visitors to Knocklil Falls in a year.
Don't ever say that out loud. John was correct.
We got to live with him.
But yes, so last weekend, we did have the Super Bass Fishing Tournament at Coosalainen that the city hosts and Parks and Rec puts on. And we had the largest, since I've been here, it was 102 boats. Even though we did have a thunderstorm come in right at blast off, the danglers stuck around and they went out and had a great day. And we had a lot of fun there. That is the 16th Annual One. This weekend, we have Smoke on the Falls up at Knocklil Falls Campground. Right now, we have 40 pros, 52 backyards. And this year, we have added Kids' Q, where we have 12 6-10-year-olds and six 11-15-year-olds competing at Smoke on the Falls. Yesterday, we did have the ribbon cutting and opening ceremonies at the new Gaston Sports Park. And I appreciate everybody that attended there. Thanks to the mayor and council and the youth baseball club and everybody else that was involved in those programs. So we officially kicked off youth baseball for this season. We have tournaments scheduled down at the youth sports park each weekend, either baseball, softball, or soccer, or all, or two of the three combined. We have Art on the Rocks next weekend. That will be next Saturday and Sunday with handmade vendors up at Knocklil Falls. So please come and enjoy that with us. And we just, we're here, ready to serve. Oh, and we do have summer camp. Summer camp is open for everybody to register right now. We are full at Raymond Hill and Mitchell. We do have some slots available at Thompson, Carver, Walnut Park, and East Gaston. So encourage everybody to get their kids signed up. Thank y'all.
Go ahead.
Could you speak, on the summer camps, can you speak to the price? There was a price change, those, right?
There is a price increase, yes. That is due to, we take these kids on field trips every week. They are going one to two places. Those, those costs have went up on us. And gas to transport our kids have went up with that. We, we just adjusted those costs to cover this, because we want kids to not only enjoy being at summer camp here in Gaston, but we want to be able to take them to other places to have fun. They get to experience Tree Top. They go to the Birmingham IMAX, I believe. They go to Spring Valley Beach. They, they travel around and get to do things. And then we stay local. We visit the falls. We visit, we go to the movies. We go skating. We just, we're an active group. We don't just sit in a community center. They do stay there a couple of days, but we're trying to get these kids out and enjoying the world through our summer camps.
That sounds awesome, just asking for a friend. But is there an age restriction on those summer?
My fifth grade.
Thanks, Jen. Appreciate it. Any other?
I'm sorry. The price is $320 for the, for eight weeks. So it's around $40 a week, which is, if you have a kid in daycare, that is considerably cheaper than that. I pay well over 100, I think mine's $135 a week for daycare. So $40 a week is great and for them to go out on all the field trips.
Thank you. Any other department heads, committees?
Do we not have, Josh, the EMA?
He's not here.
I don't see Josh. He's usually here.
He's in Sardis. I need the radios. Where do we get the radios from?
They gave them all out, but I did see a post by EMA saying that they had ordered more and that they were on the way and that they would make an announcement once they came in about another giveaway event.
I saw, I think it said after Easter.
Yeah, sometime after Easter is what the post I saw said.
Gotcha.
So I'm sure we'll get that out. We'll, we can get ahold of Josh and see if he can have a more definitive answer for you. All right. Now we'll move to Agenda Item 13. This is a citizen request to speak. This is Robert Avery, Northeast Alabama Black Chamber.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I get started, don't start my time. It's, it's interesting today that we have the Gaston Job Corps here. We also have two other gentlemen here I'd like to call, I mean, not call them, but just recognize.
Sure.
Mr. Roger Watts and former Councilman William Cunningham is here. The three of us was responsible for getting the Job Corps Center here in Gaston. And I thought that was real, real interesting that the Job Corps people are here today. And then, of course, these three, the three of us is here today, who was very instrumental in getting the Job Corps Center.
Well, that is. And thank you for bringing that up. I had no idea. That's a special moment.
Well, it was special to us. I never will forget, I got the call from Congressman Bevill's office that the congressman wanted to put a Job Corps Center in his district. At that time, he was chairman of appropriations. And he had made a commitment that if they wanted some Job Corps Centers, I think they wanted to do eight or nine. He said, "I'll only agree to it if I get one in my district." And of course, I got a call from Don Smith, who most of you may or may not know was his administrative assistant, chief of staff. And Don said, "The congressman wanted to put a Job Corps Center in the district. And I thought about you. Where can we put it?" And William Cunningham and I was talking about it. Then we called Mr. Watts, who was president of Gaston State Tech at the time. And the rest is history. The three of us got together and said, "Congressman, you can put it here." And of course, it's here now. And it's been here all that time.
I want to make sure the Job Corps folks know who these other gentlemen are, Mr. Watts and Mr. Cunningham, if you would stand, please, so they could...
Mr. Watts is there. Mr. Cunningham is outside the door right now.
Oh, okay. All right.
I think he's doing something out there.
We'll make sure that the students know him. I want to make sure they know who he is. That's, well, thank you for mentioning that, Robert. Thank you.
Now I can start my time. As you know, I'm here, this morning, we met with the Finance Committee. And I think it was a very fruitful meeting. The Northeast Alabama Black Chamber of Commerce is requesting some funding from the City of Gaston. As you know, you received some $24 million in the American Rescue Plan funds. I know the previous administration have allocated some of those funds, not all of those funds that they did. But I think this administration has also reallocated some or moved some. So I want y'all to understand that it can be done. I, I know, I've been here several times talking about it. And every time I come, they say, "Well, you know, the previous administration allocated the funds already." Okay, good. This administration can reallocate. It's up to these, your seven, the seven people up there. You are in control. And I, as a member of the city council for 24 years, I'd like to remind you guys that you guys are in charge. Now, everybody thinks the mayor is. But you guys are in charge. You control the money. And I guarantee you, when the deal go down, if something go wrong with the money, and I, and my mayor's not here, but I know what he gonna say. "I didn't have a vote." So you guys need to be aware of that. These funds need to be spent correctly. And we're asking you today to give us a portion of those funds to make sure that we meet the guidelines that the federal government has set up, plus the President of the United States have ordered that these funds be spent a special way. We're asking for $2.4 million over a period of four years. That's $600,000 a year for the, the year 2023, '24, '25, and '26. The federal government says these dollars have to be allocated by December 31st of '24, and they have to be spent by December 31st of '26. Now, why the previous administration allocated all those funds? I don't know. Why were they in a hurry? I don't know. But I do know that those funds can be spent for the projects that we've listed here. And I do know you guys can go back and change those allocations if you want to. Several things that we want to look at is doing workforce development. We want to do facade grants and signage. We want to do youth employment programs, micro loan programs, startup businesses programs, auditing services for those minority businesses, legal services for those minority businesses, and also setting up an incubator for small businesses. And somebody asked me a few minutes ago about the North Alabama Black Chamber. What was it about? And it wasn't about black folks? Well, yes, it is. It's also about underserved communities. And we are targeting several areas with these funds. And the areas that we are targeting is East Broad Street, Ewing Avenue, Forest Avenue, Tuscaloosa Avenue, Wall Street in Alabama City. These are areas that the city have, I don't want to say neglected, but underserved over the years. You know, I served on this council for 24 years, and I tried to get a number of things done in these communities. And it was very, very hard when you don't have the four votes. One of the things that this council may not be aware, but we talked about upstairs, that we have several of these programs already on the books, but they are not funded. I had a hard time getting the housing program funded. I don't know if you guys know that. We have an affordable housing program. It's not funded. There's a number of other programs that we have that are not funded. You know, we were able to fight when we had the four votes to get funding for them. But then, of course, when you don't have the four votes, you can't get the funding put in place. But anyway, again, I come to you guys as a member of the Northeast Alabama Black Chamber of Commerce, but also come to you as a member of a platform called the Southern Regional Economic Roundtable. We're going around to seven different states. And we're trying to make sure that the federal dollars that the government has passed out to schools, cities, counties, and even state government, to make sure that those dollars are spent according to the federal guidelines. And of course, we're going to be looking at the City of Gaston real hard. One of the reasons why I wanted to be on the council agenda, because we, you're recorded. So we are recording everything for records. So when we go back to the Treasury Department, and by the way, I was in Washington with you guys last week, and I did go over to the Treasury Department, by the way. They're going to be monitoring all of this. So please, ma'am, and please, sir, we want you to consider it. It's not, it's not a threat, I don't think. It's just, it's just a fact that we need to make sure that this city follows the guidelines. Also, and I think maybe you all might have found out, there are other funds available if you would apply for them. That was the other thing that I had a problem getting this government to do is apply for federal dollars. I don't know why. Because it's our money. You know, why don't we get it back? There are cities right now that's turning back in the American Rescue Plan funds because they don't want to follow the federal guidelines. It's crazy. Why would you want to give that money back when you could improve the status of your communities? Please, ma'am, and please, sir, look at this. And we're willing to sit down with you if you are sincere about funding us. Again, we've applied for other funds and applying for other funds. This would be seed money for us to continue to improve human structure. Human structure, I want to emphasize that, because you guys are doing a lot of infrastructure programs. And I'm proud to see all those things going. But if you're not improving the human structure, why would you want to improve all the other infrastructure? You don't have anybody to take advantage of it. Again, I appreciate the, the time. I know we said I could go a few minutes over, but I appreciate that. And again, I thank the Finance Committee this morning for allowing us to present our program to them.
Well, thank you for coming. And thank you for that information. It's, it's always good to hear from you. You've got vast experience. I know your time didn't stop after your 24 years. You've continued your investment in our community by the committees that you serve on. And so thank you so much. And did Mr. Cunningham come back in?
Yeah, Mr. Cunningham did come in.
FTA folks at Job Corps, this is one of the councilmen, this is one of the gentleman that helped found the Job Corps in Gaston. So Mr. Watts and Mr. Cunningham and Mr. Avery are the reason why you guys are here today.
And I'm just happy to see them here.
Me too. Thank you.
All right, at this point, we are to the remarks by the mayor and council. Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have much today. Former Councilman Avery, thank you for coming and speaking to us. I appreciate it. Always appreciate your insight. I do want to just say one thing. To my good friends Reagan Lonergan and Carrie Lonergan, their son Davis Lonergan is, is now what I consider to be a record holder here in Gaston. Shortly after our ribbon cutting at Phase Two of the sports park yesterday, they held the first Gaston Youth Baseball Club game. And Davis, who I taught everything about baseball, hit a dinger over the centerfield fence. He, I think, was the first official homerun at the Gaston Sports Park after the ribbon cutting. So congratulations to my friends and their son Davis Lonergan. Really proud of him and proud of that project out there. For those of y'all who didn't get to go out there or hadn't made it out there yet, that thing continues to develop as a world-class facility, and it's going to continue to develop. We just cut the ribbon on Phase Two of what's going to be. I think now we're up to six phases that are in planning motion. Two of them are now complete. A third one is currently under construction. A fourth phase has received funding approval to move forward, I believe. So we have, and we have two more phases coming down. So for those of you who haven't made it out to the Gaston Sports Park, please go over there. If you're not familiar where it is, it's back behind the Gaston State Community College. Just follow through the parking lot there and down the hill, and you'll see a really amazing thing. And as somebody whose father grew up in the neighborhood that butts up against the parking lot of Gaston State, I can tell you, growing up as a child, I spent hours and hours and hours and hours. I was a poor kid. We didn't have cable TV. So I, like most people from low to moderate income households, was told to get outside and find a stick. You know, so I would get on our bicycle, or we would walk down the hill to the old chert pits down there. And I have many a scuffed knees and elbows and, and palms from the, the bicycle wrecks that I, that I participated in out there on some of those ramps. So it's certainly come a long way for that community. I'm excited for that entire community to have that facility like that within walking distance is really something special. So anyway, that's, that's all I have. And then I was going to mention, but we discussed it briefly earlier, the EMA weather radios. Josh Tanner, who's from our EMA department, is not here today. But we did a weather radio giveaway, an emergency weather radio giveaway last week. And we would allow individuals to not get one, not only for themselves, but to get two or three if they wanted to take some to their neighbors, maybe that couldn't make it out. So because we allowed that to happen, I think the weather radios went pretty quick. And, and we gave out several hundred of them. I think, was it 900, I think, or something like that? But anyway, they have ordered more weather radios. They're free. You don't have to pay for them. You don't have to show your ID. You don't have to do anything. You just pull through the line. They'll give you away the radio. But they've ordered more of them, and they're on the way. And the EMA has said tentatively that at some point after Easter, there'll be another round of weather radios available for giveaway. So y'all stay tuned to the City of Gaston Facebook page. I'm sure they'll have some more information on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. Go to Council, Councilman Avery.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few here. So while we was in Washington on last weekend, got a few calls, disturbing phone calls. So there has been quite a bit of shooting in the District Three communities. And so let's, let's, let's try to make something perfectly clear. We have seniors and veterans and children that live in this community. I'm pretty sure our seniors and veterans just want to live out the rest of their life as peaceful as possible. And, and, and unfortunate is, for some of these young people that I believe it is, these are your grandparents that, that are dropping to the floor, that are calling my phone and, and calling the cops, wanting at least to get through some rest, to get some night, good night sleep. It's very, very shameful. And, and, and I don't know careless, to say the least, to know that, that you're not shooting at someone. So I thank you for that. But you're shooting up in the air. But here's a little thing from an avid gun owner and love to shoot. What goes up must come down. All right? And so as it goes up and traveled down, there could be an innocent bystander that happens to be like me that gets up and walk outside around 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning because I have a sleeping problem. It may hit, hit someone. And, and again, you know, this makes no sense when, again, you don't live in a community, but you come over there to that community. I don't understand why our community seems to be the community where everybody want to do some of the crazy stuff. So this is what we're going to do. We got quite a bit of cameras that we're going to order. And we're going to help out this situation because it is, it is sickening that our, our seniors and veterans, anybody, doesn't even, you know, everyone deserves to live and everyone deserved to get a good night's rest. Okay? And so, you know, I just want to make that publicly clear, which I've always done. I go to my Facebook Live, I've never been shy to say why, how I feel. And these guys know where I live. So if you want to speak in person, let's talk about it. Because that's a real situation. talk about it. Because that's a real situation. The other one, that is a pet peeve of mine as well, is trash and debris. It sickens me that we ride down almost every street in District Three and we have people that does not have the common courtesy or sense, I would think, to take their trash and dump it in a trash can. And if you're in around the Tuscaloosa Avenue area, you even got business owners that have huge dumpsters that don't even lock their dumpsters so that you can throw your trash in the dumpster. So what we're going to do, we're going to put up a picture of a trash can in the dumpster just in case if you don't know what one looks like. Because I'm just, I'm thinking that's what the problem is. This makes no sense that we have, again, and I don't think that these are residents in District Three. And I'm not blaming any other district because through riding out and with our person that's in charge of that, thank the trash and debris crew, thank Public Works that came out, I think, this past Friday, Thursday, cleaned up a huge mess that someone made. They looked into the trash, found the receipts, found mail of the persons, and let's get them. You know, that's all I can say. You know, because this makes no sense at all. So with that in mind, District Three will do a community cleanup June, July, and August. The actual date and time will to be announced because we're looking to partner with some of our industries within the city, county, and our neighboring counties. So we're already in conversation with those persons and those persons have agreed that if we let them know a date and time, that they will love to be a part of creating a clean atmosphere for our community. And so that our seniors can feel comfortable coming out and going to the park. And our children will have a safe, inhabitable environment that they can go and play in. Okay? Saturday, April 8th, 2:30 PM, at the Francis Jelani Harris Square, AKA Carver Square, there will be a community Easter egg hunt provided by the Carver Community Revitalization Committee. So if you're not doing anything this Saturday, April 8th, 2:30, make sure that you go by and allow the children. Also, I think they're doing something that I introduced to the now-president that I felt so passionate about, is they're doing, they're making also the hunt handicap accessible. So, an autism accessible. So there will be eggs with balloons on them and that will be easy accessible for the handicap and autism kids. And so, I got that from an idea from Detroit, Michigan, with a group of autism specialists there. Let's see here. District Three is also starting something different and new. So we will have a Business of the Week where we will highlight on our Facebook page. And so, we will go around to a business in each, the goal is to go around to each business in the district by the end of the year and highlight what the business offer and their years of service in our community, in the district particularly, and just highlight them and appreciate them for their service. So that's something that we're looking to do. Also, something new, we're just waiting for the approval from the mayor's office, and that's coffee with a cop. And that will be with the Carver Senior Nutrition Group. And so, it's not limited to them. Only anyone is welcome. And so, it'll be following a council meeting once we get that, hopefully, next council meeting, once we get that approved. And it's no topics, it's just having conversation. It's kind of just, sort of, just kind of getting community officers back in rendition and just kind of the community knowing who their offices are. And just kind of getting some of those questions asked. And then, maybe, we'll then move on to the fire department and then we can talk about fire safety as we have done before, and then so on and so on. We have also made our announcement and made it clear that District Three, every second Tuesday, we will have our monthly meeting. Every second Tuesday will be our monthly meeting at Downtown Civic Center. And the times will remain the same. We'll have our 6:00, starting at 6:00 PM, end at 7:30. And that will be at the Downtown Civic Center in the T Room. Also, I'd like to thank Mr. Avery and Mr. Cunningham, who were the first Black Americans that was on the City Council when they switched over in the 80s. So good to see you all still here. Thank you all for coming and your continuous work along with Everett Williams also, also Mr. Higgins, who are also doing work, and all of the other previous council persons that are doing still continuous work in the community that continues to make our community what it is today and with hopes that it will make it better. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilwoman Minatra.
I just want to mention that First Friday this week, we will have a, the Museum of Art will host three new artists that will be presenting, and they will be offered the entire months of April and May. So First Friday, that reception will be from 5:00 to 8:00 this Friday night in conjunction with First Friday. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Minatra. Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to once again thank the mayor and the staff and the council for all the great work that they're doing, that we're doing. And also, all the staff here at City Hall, thank you for all of your contributions. They don't go unnoticed. When it's now continued condolences to Councilman Robinson, who just recently lost his father recently. So we keep his family lifted up in prayer. Also, with Mr. Avery coming, thank you, Mr. Cunningham, Mr. Avery, for sharing what you shared today, Mr. Avery. I would like to request, Mr. President, some hard copy. I like documentation. Because these ARP funds were split between two different administrations, to see exactly what was spent and what was left. I mean, I think that's only fair to see what was spent and what's actually left available with those ARP funds so that we can make an informed decision. Also, want to just remind everybody that for the last 10 years, we've been doing gas giveaway. Last year, we gave away about, our church gave away about $10,000 in free gas on Rainbow Drive, and it was really congested. So this weekend, on Saturday, we'll be doing that again, giving away at least $10,000 in free gas. We're going further out of the city, out across from Ollies this time at Shell. I say that to say because if you get calls at City Hall about traffic, just remember, we only do this once a year. It's for a good cause. Sometimes people don't have gas to get back and forth. And so, think, want to thank Councilman Wilson, who's also going to partner with us. And we're going to have about 200 boxes of food. Thanks to Councilman Wilson and former Commissioner Parker to go along with the $10,000 in gas that we'll be doing on this weekend. Just remember, it's Holy Week. Tell somebody about Jesus every place you go. He came to seek and to save that which was lost. He's the reason for the season. And so, with that, we just want to tell you, thank you. Good to see Pastor Thomas and Pastor Simmons in the back. Thank you all for being here today, as well as the Job Corps students. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to agree with Councilman Avery about the litter situation. I mean, that's one of our biggest causes in District Seven is trash everywhere. And I promise you, we are purchasing those cameras and putting them up in these places where trash is being dumped. And I believe that we're doing a really good job of keeping it clean. We have different organizations going out and cleaning up the neighborhoods and that does help. I mean, I've always said, if it stays clean, it'll be clean. And people don't throw trash on clean streets. They throw trash on top of trash. And that's just the way it's always been. It's a horrible situation. I don't know why people do it. But yeah, we are putting those cameras out. We're going to get to the bottom of it. We're going to fix it. I will say this, if someone calls us in District Seven or in any of the districts, you know, saying there's a pile of trash on the road where somebody's dumped something out. And our Public Works Department's out there like that to get it up. So, I mean, sometimes within an hour. So let us know. We can't all be in this, we can't ride our neighborhoods every day and see what's going on. So like, if you do have a pile of trash that's gotten neglected or has gotten forgotten about, just let us know and we'll get it cleaned up for you. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Robinson. Councilwoman Lathan.
I don't have anything, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mayor Ford is out of town today and we're going to invite his Chief of Staff, Brett Johnson, to deliver his remarks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, Mayor Ford is taking care of his health, which I appreciate. So I just want to give a few updates in his place. We did have a trip to our nation's capital this past week. Spent a lot of time in front of some decision-makers. So when it comes to applying for federal funding, we have, as of today, submitted just under $30 million in requests for federal earmarks and grants at the direction of Mayor Ford. So we look forward to hearing back from those. You never know how those will go, but I can tell you one thing, Mayor Ford's working very diligently to secure every dollar that he can from the federal government to benefit the City of Gaston. So some of those that we met with was Senator Britt, Senator Tuberville, Congressman Aderhal, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Appalachian Regional Commission, the U.S. Department of Transportation, several meetings with their divisions, and the Department of Housing and Urban Development. So we're working diligently to pursue those resources. Speaking of trash cleanup, Mayor Ford has offered an opportunity for city employees. You know, one of the challenges to tackling this major litter and debris issue is human resources and time and availability. So what Mayor Ford has done is designated next Friday, April 14th, as a citywide cleanup day. So we have invited every city employee who is available to take that day, if they can, off of their duty, to help go out into certain areas of the community and clean up around the city. So we can start showing some pride and really roll up our sleeves together and work on these projects as city employees. So we'll be putting some details out about that on our Facebook page and on our website soon. But we will invite members of the public to join in those efforts. Certainly, council members, if you're available to join, we'd love to have you all. We just want to do one fell swoop to help us kind of kick it off. And then, obviously, with your help, we're going to keep on eating at the elephant as they speak, you know, as trash and debris issues come up. Another announcement that I don't think we've mentioned at City Council is you'll notice on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday at City Hall, we now have a food truck parked out front available for the public. If they want to come and eat lunch here, we have that option. So I wanted to share that today with you all as well. Next week, I believe, we're going to have some introductions for you, but I wanted to kind of tee that up. We'll have some changes in the Finance Department for the City of Gaston. Ms. Rossar has retired, is officially retiring as Finance Director in her place. Mayor Ford has named Brandon Phillips, the Finance Director. He has been the Assistant Finance Director for several years. And so, he'll be promoted into that position. And then, we also have a new face at City Hall. Her name is Laura Copeland. Again, they are actually working with Ms. Rossar this week, just in transition as best they can, or they would be here today. But Laura Copeland comes from the City of Jacksonville, where she worked in the Finance Department there for several years. And she'll be overseeing our Revenue Department as the Director, excuse me, Director of Revenue, which is a position that's really been unfilled for quite some time. It's a vital position to make sure that we're, the city's bringing in the revenue it's supposed to be bringing in, right? So just wanted to mention those two items. And again, I think next week, we'll have them in front of you to make formal introductions. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. I have a point of clarification. The Job Corps wearing in, is this, is that after our meeting?
It is.
Okay. All right. Well, I do want to take an opportunity, though, since we're on television and this is being video, that I do want to recognize Corey Davis, the Senator Director of Job Corps. We're very proud to have you here today, Mr. Davis, with all of your FGA students. And if you will, please, if you're a FGA student, member, would you please stand? I'd like to recognize you folks. All right. Thank you so much for being here. When our meeting's over, these men and women are going to be sworn in to the FGA offices. I just wanted to make sure you all were recognized. So thank you so much for being here today. We're proud to have you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Just to kind of wrap things up, the Gaston Career Center, Katrina Herring, who is our manager. Katrina, if you'll recognize us, there was a hiring fair that Ms. Herring headed up on March 23rd. At the venue, it was highly successful. There were 109 adults that showed up, 512 students. And Ms. Herring, if I understood you right, these students were there from Job Corps. Thank you all very much for showing that initiative. And there were 85 employers. The main compliments from the employees were that the event was well-organized, they were able to network with employers, and they were treated hospitably. The job, the Career, Gaston Career Center will reach back out to the employers to see how many job seekers were hired. The neat thing about this, it was, obviously, it's free, but interviews were conducted on-site and resumes were prepared by the Career Center on-site for the job seekers. You know, if you think back to when you've applied for a job, you know, the scariest, it's often said, the scariest thing in the world is a blank sheet of paper. So to make a resume, you have to start with a blank sheet of paper. And that's not the easiest thing to do unless that's what you do. So thank you to the Career Center for providing that guidance and that help. The people that, the job seekers that attended now have a resume, so now you don't have a blank piece of paper. You can update that periodically as time goes and get even further help from Ms. Herring at the Gaston Career Center. We did go to Washington, DC, as was pointed out, to the National League Congressional Cities Conference. It's an annual conference where the cities of America converge on Capitol Hill to ask for money, basically. And that's what we did. $30 million in grants. Our mayor's office and staff has petitioning our federal government. So we are excited about that and excited about the opportunity with five new council members. We attended a lot of sessions over those days and learned a lot. I can tell you, the information taken was just huge. There's a lot to do, a lot of walking, but there's a lot of listening and a lot of good speakers and a lot of good things that I know that we've brought back to our city and to our individual districts. I believe that will prove vital. And I want to also thank you, Councilman Smith, for the request for the ARPA report. I'd like to ask Eva Nelson, City Clerk, if you would email that report to all the council members to make sure that everybody has a copy of that. And I'm assuming that's available online also. Ms. Nelson?
I'm not sure.
Not sure if that is?
I will check.
Okay. I'm sure. All right. That's, go down my list here. Gaston Career Center, Job Corps. Last but not least, nuisance and abatement hearings are today at 1:30. We're going to try something new. As you can see, y'all, it's 12:35 almost. We're doing a lot of business. Normally, we're through by 12:00. So we're trying to segue into doing nuisance and abatement hearings possibly once a month and to do that separately from the regular council meeting. It's just, there's so much city business going on now. Things have just changed and changed in a positive way. So we've agreed to work with Mr. Harbison and his staff and others to try that, to expedite things for these council meetings and also to be more efficient on the nuisance and abatement hearings. So those will be in this room at 1:30, which is in about 55 minutes from now. There being, are there any other announcements that I have overlooked or?
Mr. President, can I just add a couple?
I'm a threat to overlook something.
I actually, I wanted to mention two things.
Sure.
So many people around this building tell me I need to stay off social media all the time, but I do need to respond to this. I want to make it clear, speaking in the National League of Cities Conference, when our spouses as council members travel with us, I want to clarify, the city does not pay for our spouses' travel. We pay for that out of our own pocket. The city does not pay for our spouses' meals or any sort of entertainment while they're with us. We cover those expenses ourselves personally, including airfare, food, beverages. The city does not pay for the alcohol for spouses or anything like that. And specifically, I'm talking about a post I made where I went into a hotel in Washington, DC that's very fancy, and they have an expansive liquor selection. And one of the drinks that they offer is a one-ounce shot of a specific type of alcohol that's $3,500 for a one-ounce pour of it. I want to make it clear, I did not order a $3,500 shot of liquor. It was a joke when I made that post. The city certainly didn't pay for it and I would never pay for it. And I can assure you that my debit card would have been declined had I tried to pay for it. So I just want to make that clear. That just because I heard, I heard from a lot of people about spending the city's money appropriately. We don't, we don't go and treat ourselves to $1,000 shots of liquor. The other thing I want to say on a good note, that just, hopefully, there's a lot of young people in the room and parents, if you get a chance, talk to your kids about it. Yesterday was a huge day for me as a space nerd, as we are working diligently to try to recruit the Challenger Space Education Center here to Gaston, which would be just awesome. Yesterday, NASA announced the four crew members that will ride the Orion spacecraft on top of the NASA's Space Launch System. They are the Artemis II Crew, and it will be the first four people that will return to the moon since 1968, I think, '69, '69. First four people to return to the moon on the Orion spacecraft, the Artemis II Crew. So for kids, if you guys haven't looked into that, check it out. It's really awesome. Parents, please expose your kids to the NASA space program. It's unbelievable. It changed my life as a young kid to go to space camp. And it's something that I still a young kid to go to space camp, and it's something that I still get giddy about like I'm a little kid. So check out. Congratulations. Go USA.
Good. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Yes, sir. Yes, Councilman Smith.
Take one of Councilwoman Lathan's minutes. I'm sorry, I mentioned two pastors. I didn't mention the other one, Pastor Harold Kimble in the back. Thank you. I'm sorry. I didn't see you back there, sir. Didn't want to leave out of here without mentioning the other pastor that I do see right now. But anyway, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. All right. With that, we will be adjourned back at 1:30.